Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome those joining us by phone, by Zoom, and in person to the August 24th, 9:00 AM meeting of the Supplemental Retirement Board of Trustees. We'll go through some housekeeping items here in a moment. I have to leave at 11 o'clock for another engagement, but I think we may be through by then, but I'll hand the gavel over to whoever wants to compete for it. So with that, I'll ask that you stand to join us for our pledge of allegiance and our salute to North Carolina flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of North Carolina and pledge to yield the state of loyalty and faith.
Thank you for coming and joining with that. We have a public comment signup sheet over here and it's to be monitored as we go. The comment section asks that we mute your phones, especially those that are joining us remotely, especially when you're not speaking. If you do speak as a board member, please, or anybody else, please speak by yourself. We'll be taking a roll call by name unless there's objection. A motion and a second will be counted as yes. No objection being heard. We'll do that for efficiency purposes. Board members, if you must leave the meeting at any point, please announce your departure as well as your return. These items must be recorded in the meeting minutes. As I said earlier, please state your name before. Finally, most importantly, text or any other recorded communications between board members during the meeting, even on a personal phone or device or public record to the extent they concern our meeting agenda. With that, we'll call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Here.
Chevella Thomas? James Lumston? James Lumston? Greg Patterson?
Here.
Bob Shea?
Here.
Nels Roslin?
Here.
Steve Beam?
Present.
And Wynden Hibbler?
Present.
Thank you. And do we have a quorum? We do. Give me just a moment, please. And Lorraine's not with us, right? That's correct. I'd like to extend condolences to Lorraine. On behalf of the SRP staff as well as our board, on behalf of her mom, Emily Johnson, I'll have staff send that obituary out to you at a later point. We know she was an amazing Mormon because we know how amazing Lorraine is, so please hold her family in our thoughts. With that, we have a quorum. Ethics awareness, please take a moment to review the closed agenda. Does anyone have an actual potential for the appearance of a conflict of interest regarding matters of importance? Hearing none, in the appendix, you'll find the reappointment letters for Steve Beam and Lorraine Johnson. Congratulations. And I want to thank Laura Rowe, who has done so much work at the Treasurer's Office. I think I sit on 19 or 20 boards and eight of, nine of those, I actually chair. So keeping up with all the board members and whether they got their CI's is vitally important. Laura is taking a new position as the head of contracting for the state health plan over the next few weeks, so we'll have somebody, there are big heels to fill with Laura Rowe in her regard, but we look forward to all of her incredible qualities that she brings as far as the state health plan. Just to announce, this is Wynden Hibbler's last board meeting. He had accepted a new role at the beginning of this year and as a result, will not be able to continue to serve on the board. Wynden has been an amazing board member. I've learned every time that he has spoken or provided insight, and he's like many of, if not all of you, someone that when they speak, all of our attention should be on understanding what they say, not just responding to what they say, because he has incredible insights. So Wynden, you're on the air, I believe.
Yes, I'm here.
Would you like to say a couple of words?
Well, I think I submitted my resignation letter a couple of days ago. I just think it was, it's been a good experience for me to work with you guys. I think I tried to be as helpful as possible. I learned a lot about being on a larger board, and I hope that I helped as much as I could when I could, and I'll miss working with you guys.
Thank you. And as I responded, our door and our heart and our mind are always open to you, and any way that we can help you in the future, feel free to call on us. And likewise, anytime that, since Melinda's not here, you will be one of our historians. So anytime that we have to look in the rearview, in the Wayback Machine to figure out what the intention of the board was on any particular matter, we may, we may call on you. Thank you for your diligence also in getting us to transition out of our 403B plan and appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Also want to extend a warm welcome to Chris Byrd, who's our newest board member, newest member of the investment management team. Chris Morris would like to add a few words to.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Treasure. Good morning, everybody. Yeah, we're thrilled to have Chris Byrd join us. He's the newest staff member, has the portfolio manager for the supplemental retirement plans, so he'll be overseeing a good portion of the investment function for this plan. He joined us about a month ago now, so he's quickly coming up to speed. He has about a decade worth of investment industry experience. Most recently, he came front to us from CapTrust Advisors and has previous experience at Merrill Lynch and Fidelity Investments. I'm thrilled that he has joined and will be able to help us out on the investment side. You'll likely be hearing more from him in the coming quarters and hopefully less from me.
Both Chris's. Thank you. You're not off the hook.
No.
Chris, welcome, and I appreciate you joining us. If you want to look up Chris's resume, he went to university that has an undefeated football team, so you can figure that one out on your own, right, Christopher?
Yes.
Okay. But he and I are fellow Spartans, so from UNC Greensboro, which doesn't have a football team, so that's why we continue to be undefeated. And with that, welcome. Like I said, a couple of words.
Yeah, thank you. Glad to be here, Mr. Treasure. Excited about being able to, you know, help out and just do the right thing from a fiduciary standpoint with all of our participants, because like I've heard on many of these calls, one in seven, one in eight people we encounter work for the state, and so we have a big impact, and I'm looking forward to upholding that responsibility.
Thank you. Actually, in the total pension system, when you include the locals, it's now one out of 10.
Okay.
Pretty stunning, the responsibility. We have nearly 10,000 people on the pension side. With that, we'll move right into approval of the meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Second?
I'll second answer.
Thank you, Mr. Controller. Motion second being made. Any further discussion regarding the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Chevella Thomas?
Aye.
James Lumston? Greg Patterson?
Aye.
Steve Beam?
Aye.
And Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Thank you. I should have combined these. Do I hear a like motion for the July 13th meeting minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Chevella. Mr. Shea, Chevella, would that be a second?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Motion second being made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
James Lumston?
Aye.
Greg Patterson?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Steve Beam?
Aye.
And Wynden Hibbler. Did I hear you, James?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Now it's my pleasure to announce that the supplemental retirement plans has won a NAGDA award for our National Retirement Security Month campaign, which takes place every October. The North Carolina Department of State Treasurer has been selected as recipient of the 2023 Leadership Recognition Award for his outstanding National Retirement Security Month campaign. I'd like to recognize and thank the SRP team, along with our partners at Empower, for putting together this extraordinary campaign, which is designed to encourage greater participation in the plans. We've shared a copy of our entry in the appendix, and Jeff, if you want to see if you want to.
Yeah, just wonderful teamwork between the staff here and our partners at Empower. This is, you know, something that we strive for every year. It's really important to encourage, encourage a participation in the plan, so October being the National Retirement Security Month just gives us a really good opportunity to really kind of just hit on that point, drive that point home.
Somebody in the audience you want to make one. Yeah. Mike and Matt over at Empower.
Thank you so much for the kind words, Treasure, and Jeff, and a great partnership that led to you guys winning yet another award. I think in the decade now that I've worked on the plans, I want to say this is your at least eighth or ninth NAGDA award, so just continues to show the importance of these plans across the entire country. So thank you very much for the opportunity to serve every day.
I thought we would earn it for the transition of the 403B plan, which we're not the only people that have ever done that, but I think we're probably the only people who've done it that smoothly, so yes, internal communications. Not here. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Now I'll turn the agenda over to Jeff to discuss administrative matters, audit, annual update.
Yep, thank you. So just real brief for those who are not part of the audit subcommittee, we did in July receive the independent auditor's report. It did result in an unmodified or clean opinion. Want to thank our partners within our, within our financial operations division, who really did a lot of the heavy lifting when it comes, when it comes to the financial statement audit. But again, really good to hear that we had a clean opinion there. As for the other portion of the audit, which is the employer testing, we had, we had six employers with very, very minor findings, mainly around employee and employer contribution calculations. Our NC Plans team at Empower is currently working with these employers to resolve any of those outstanding issues. I did want to note that Thomas Ray from UHY made a point to give, give a kudos to the board for the fact that this board actually commissions them to do the employer testing. Not all plans like ours actually go to that extra step and do that employer testing, so he wanted to make sure that the board was recognized for, for recommissioning that work. Next item is the fee, the fee recommendation final vote after the May meeting where we talked about reducing the fee. We followed, followed our procedure, which was to post that fee reduction proposal onto the web and solicit any feedback there. We did not receive any feedback on that item, and so thus, we just need a board vote to finalize that, and the fee reduction will be effective beginning the first of September.
Motion to approve the fee reduction to one basis point?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Motion second being made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Chevella Thomas?
Aye.
James Lumston?
Aye.
Bob Shea?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
And Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
And I have one last matter I wanted to discuss. At our last meeting, when we were talking about the investment of our reserve funds, currently that's in the, in the Gallagher Stable Value Fund. Mr. Beam raised the issue of whether or not we might want to change that to a money market fund where it may be yielding a higher yield. One thing I wanted to point out is in our investment agreement with Gallagher, there is a competing fund transfer restriction, which means if you are going from one fund to another that competes, it must go through what they call a 90-day equity wash. And so given that, and even though the clause is really written at the participant level, we felt like we probably should adhere to that as well. And after, after much discussion, we didn't feel like that it would be prudent to take our, to take our reserve funds through a 90-day equity wash, given what might happen there in the market. So we're making the recommendation that we just stay invested in the stable value fund where over time, those rates will, will catch up. I heard what you said. I understand what you said, but our average participant doesn't, they may not accept that. So I know it's factual, but sometimes they have a difficulty understanding why there just can't be a money market option, because that is a concept that they understand. So even though you've given this report about standing down at the present time, I want to challenge all of our partners to keep looking for a solution to this issue, because we need to be like water. Water always finds its way. We need to find a way to be able to offer this as an option, because they may know what stable value means, or they may not, but they definitely know what money markets are. And I think that, I think with what I see is more volatility, probably for the rest of my life, actually, in our markets, both the bond and the stock market. I just think we have to find some way to get to this, a money market option. So keep working.
And I was, and I was simply talking about the investment of our reserves and not having an option in the plan.
Okay. I don't know how to take all that back. I don't take any of that back. We still need to, we don't have a money market option, right?
As an investment option in the plan, no, but in terms of how we invest our fee reserves.
Okay. All right. So then everything I said stands?
It does.
We need to figure out how to get a money market option as an investment option. Is that a, is that a, is that a heavy lift?
That would be up to our partners. Again, they would be the ones that would have to, would have to monitor any of the competing fund, fund of restrictions between the stable value and, and the money market.
Yeah, at a high level, from a record-keeping perspective.
Just identify yourself.
Yep. Mike McCann with Empower. So from a record-keeping perspective, which is what Empower does on your behalf, we would have the ability to administer a equity wash provision, should the plan offer a competing fund like a money market, but I think it's a much more sophisticated conversation at an investment level, which, which I can't speak to.
Sure.
On the contractual provisions around adding a product like that and what that would potentially do to your stable value. But record-keeping wise, we have seen unique circumstances where a plan wants to add a competing fund and making sure you've got that equity wash provision in place.
Okay. Do you have any other clients that have a money market option inside their plan?
It's very few and far between. It's something that you do not see that often anymore. Most plans, in order to get a favorable crediting rate with a stable value product, cannot have a competing option as part of their investment lineup, and that's part of why you've got like the better quality quarterly guarantee or rate with your stable value, and that's why you don't see the money market option offered that often.
All right. Well, we're, have been trailblazers with this plan for the whole life, and maybe this will be another example. So I just think that I'd like to get on top of this and see if we can make it happen. Any board members want to comment on that?
Mr. Treasure? Yeah. I think it's an issue definitely worth exploring. I don't know if we've worn a staff analysis report at a future meeting, the pros and cons of logistical contract considerations.
Yeah, I welcome that. So however y'all want to make that jump up on the table.
You can certainly do that.
Christopher, if you can do that and get a 401K match out of the General Assembly next week, you would have had a good week.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
This is Steve Beam again. I had asked part of that question last quarter. I think that my rec, my thought process was more on the lines of the reserve fund, because yeah, from what I've seen, there, you can't really have the competitive nature of that with the stable value without jeopardizing that to the participant level. So I'm sure it's worth studying again, and with interest rates on money markets having been near zero for the past 10 or 15 years, it hasn't been as relevant, but I think it's a good topic to explore.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, got off track there. I take full responsibility for that. All right, are we going to Reed now, or are we? Reed's joining us by phone. Are you ready to go?
Yes, sir. As you know, the, the board has adopted several governance policies, which provide operational structure for the board and others who are responsible for the 401K and 457. One of the policies is the placement agent, political contribution, and connection disclosure policy, which promotes transparency, high ethical standards in the, in our process of selecting investment managers. The policy, as you, as you may be aware, requires extensive disclosures by investment managers and any placement agents used by those investment managers who are seeking to get business from the SRP's investments. The policy also restricts the use of placement agents by managers. And placement agents, generally speaking, are people and firms who market investment opportunities to potential investors, such as the supplemental retirement plans. Under the policy, under our policy, a placement agent can be an employee of the investment manager, as well as a firm or person outside of the investment manager. And as an aside, most of what we see, to the extent that we see placement agents much anymore, whether it's on the retirement system side or the supplemental retirement plan side, are generally employees of the investment manager, someone with business development or relationship management, or something like that. And our policy is broad enough to capture certain in-house marketing employees, if you like. Investment managers are required to disclose the use and compensation placement agents. The policy also requires investment managers and placement agents to disclose personal and professional connections, whether they're members of the department, the board, and as well as political contributions to the treasurer. Disclosure forms are required for a new investment management agreement, or in some cases, a substantive amendment to an existing IMA. And a substantive amendment may be adding an investment strategy, it may be increasing investment management fees. As background, the policy was originally adopted by the board in 2014, and the board's amended the policy five times since then, most recently in 2020. And our policy was adapted from the retirement systems version of the policy. And the department recently went through a major review and it ended in a major revision of policy for the retirement systems. This actually included changing the name of the policy to the Investment Transaction Disclosure Policy. Staff adapted retirement systems new policy for SRP, and that's the version in your materials. And just briefly to summarize the changes, the goals were twofold. One, improve the effectiveness of the policy by focusing more on the disclosures necessary to ensure the integrity of the investment transaction process. Second, to simplify and shorten the policy, which makes it easier for investment managers to complete the forms, and easier for staff to review them. In particular, in your material, I listed some of the key features of the policy, but let me note a few of those changes. The policy defines the terms key departmental members, which includes board members, key investment manager members, key placement agent members. And these definitions lead to more clarity and more appropriate coverage in disclosures regarding personal and professional connections, political contributions, and financial benefits. And also, the disclosure regarding connections and benefits has been expanded beyond the department and the board, including members of the General Assembly and the Council of State. However, I want to note that, that while the revisions are significant, the goals in the process didn't change. They're, they're the same. And for example, I want to highlight that the reporting responsibility remains on the investment manager and the placement agent. It's not on members of the department, members of the board, or members of any other state entity. So with that, staff recommends adoption of the Transaction Disclosure Policy in your materials, but if there are any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
This is a recommendation that requires a vote, and I'll say for the record, I've always been opposed to placement agents in any part of this building, and that was true yesterday, true today, it'll be true tomorrow. And I appreciate Reed bringing this to our attention, but I'm also somebody who believes you don't need a law to tell you what's right and what's wrong, and taking contributions or being involved in placement agencies is wrong, period, and always has been, in my opinion. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to take staff's recommendation regarding the investment transaction disclosure policy.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion second being made. Any further discussion, or questions? Out, the clerk will call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
James Lumston?
Aye.
Greg Patterson?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Steve Beam?
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
All right. Next, Reed's going to go over 457 plan amendments.
As you may remember, the Secure Act 2.0 removed the so-called first day of the month rule for governmental 457B plan, and that rule required that when you selected a contribution amount, whether you were selecting that amount as enrollment or as a change later on, you had to wait until the following month for your election to go into effect. So the amendments in your material eliminate the first day of the month rule for the NC 457 plan, and staff recommends approval of the amendments in your materials. Are there any questions?
I'm going to approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Controllers. Motion second being made for discussion. Here you go, the clerk call the rule.
Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
Shavella Thomas.
Aye.
James Lumston. James Lumston.
Aye, aye.
Greg Patterson.
Aye.
Bob Shea.
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler.
Aye.
This next item Reed presenting, I don't know why it's not in our board book, but you have the floor.
Thank you. The five-year term of our contract with Callon expires next March. And as background, we entered into the current contract in in March 2019 following request for proposals that we conducted jointly with the retirement systems. And Callon was selected through that RFP process for both both for us and for the retirement systems. And the retirement systems contract has the same five-year term as SRP's contract. So the board has two options. The vendor selection policy requires the use of an RFP or similar process for a new investment consultant contract, so the board can opt to issue an RFP. However, the board also has the option to extend Callon's current contract. Staff has had initial discussions with Callon about the possibility of an extension. However, if we need to issue an RFP, then we need to start that process soon. So to sort of balance those two approaches, staff proposes the the following approach, which is gonna which would preserve both of those options, a contract extension possibility and an RFP possibility. Staff requests authority to negotiate a contract extension with Callon on similar terms to the current contract. If negotiations with Callon are successful, staff will bring the contract to the board for approval at the fourth quarter meeting. However, if negotiations with Callon are not successful, staff will issue an RFP and provide an update to the board at the next meeting. Are there any questions?
So the current contract ends what year?
Next March.
The contract ends in March, March of 24?
Yes.
And your recommendation is to extend it for how many years?
We've had initial discussions and I'll defer to Chris on that, but we had initial discussions about maybe two years.
And what's your definition of similar?
Similar is going to be similar services. I mean, I think we're all familiar with what our investment consultant both Callon and previously provides at quarterly board meetings. And similar, we would also look to similar in the in the in the price range.
So is the price going to be lower or equal to?
I am not sure. We've had initial discussions, but not sure where that would where that would land, which is kind of why that why we would want to preserve flexibility, you know, to see if we bring something back to the board in the fourth quarter meeting, whether that's a comparable contract and the board would have the an up or down vote on that. Or we, you know, or we don't think we got comparable terms, so, you know, let's take it out to an RFP, issue that RFP, and we would give you an update on that process at the fourth quarter meeting.
So there's not an approval of a contract today. It's basically approving staff to go negotiate with Callon. We cannot reach acceptable terms and allowing us to go out to RFP. Well, not to be rude, but since we don't have anything in front of us, what's on my paper, do I have a motion to approve the investment consulting contract? That's what it says. So that's I'm without objection for the board. I don't think we should be voting on this today. I direct the staff to do what you just described and bring it back to us at the next board meeting. Is that satisfactory?
Do we have a? Yes. Excuse me, this is Reed. We do need under if we're going to before we issue an RFP, we do need the board's approval. So we would like a approval from the the board to issue an RFP if we need to. Because if we get to, we don't issue the RFP until December, then we're that's a short time period to run through an RFP process as required by the vendor selection policy.
Yeah. I'm just reacting to what I have in front of me, which is nothing. Is the retirement system taking asking for the same flexibility?
We will likely try to keep the contracts the same. So they both expire at the same time, so we will likely try to keep the contracts in the same.
The vendor the same or the contract?
Excuse me, sorry.
The vendor the same or the contract?
The vendor's the same. They're two separate contracts because it's two separate legal entities technically, but it's, you know, it's kind of a bundled price to some extent, right? Because we have the the same vendor. So if we were to do one without the other, it could affect the price of the other ones.
So I would entertain a motion that we direct staff to pursue these negotiations and if necessary, to pursue an issue and so an RFP prior to the next board meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask the question before the motion?
Absolutely.
So aren't we putting the cart before the horse? Because if you haven't negotiated a an extension for two years and we don't want to vote to have an RFP in place and we don't even know what's going to happen, I mean, isn't spending unnecessary?
Well, I I heard what you said. I guess what I was trying to do is to introduce a motion that gives the staff the flexibility to continue their negotiation. And if they're not satisfied with how that is going, it gives them the direction as number point two is to pursue an RFP. I think we're putting the cart beside the horse.
Okay. Well, I I still move.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And it's kind of awkward for me, but I'm very also very conscious, this is my last term as the state treasurer, of doing a lot of stuff that would bind the next person sitting in this seat. So that's not going to be perfect. It's not going to be probably it's not going to be consistent, but on big things like this, I'm trying to be conscious of who the next treasurer is going to be. So that's on building leases, that's on this, it's on everything that involves this office. Reed, is that satisfactorily worded?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And does that give you all the horsepower you need to negotiate a lower similar meaning lower contract with Callon?
It 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 does, yes.
They're smiling with their eyes. All right. Motion second being made, and thank y'all for your latitude in that because I I didn't really know what we were voting on. That's the responsibility of the chair to know what the board's voting on. So I apologize for that. So motion second being made. Any further discussion? Okay, here you go, the corporate call the rule. Treasurer Falwell, actually, Reed, you restate the motion in the way that you want to restate it.
Yes, sir. It is to the motion to approve negotiations with Callon for a contract extension and if necessary, an RFP for investment consulting services.
Which could involve an extension to either one year or two years.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Treasurer Falwell.
Aye.
James Lumston.
Aye.
Greg Patterson.
Aye.
Bob Shea.
Aye.
Nels Roslin.
Aye.
And Wynden Hibbler.
Aye.
Thank you all. Now we're on to our CEM benchmarking presentation and I know this may seem kind of dry to the board members, but in so many ways, it's the only sanitation grade that our staff gets is from this benchmarking service about how good they are as far as the investment fees are concerned. We get sanitation grades on our call center. We get all kinds of sanitation. I'm using that word obviously out of context, but so this is when you hear this report, just think about all the woman and man hours that went into making this jump up on the table. It's what I'm asking you to do. So go ahead.
Chris Dahl.
Another Christopher. Yep.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't have the ability to, oh, there we go. Perfect. Thank you, Chairman Foul. Good morning, everyone. My name is Christopher Dahl. I'm with CEM. I'm the U.S. Client Coverage Representative for the firm. And and we exist to help plans like yourselves do a better job of understanding costs and performance for the benefit of your members. So that is a little bit about us. This is a little bit about the universe that we're looking at. So we do cover DC plans like yours over 1.4 $1.2 trillion in assets and over 10 million participants are included in our database. And we are surveying over 121 U.S. large corporate and government plans. And so all the information that we're collecting from these plans helps build a framework that allows us to benchmark your costs and your performance against the peer and the universe. Do I have control over flipping the slides? No. Okay, perfect. I'll just instruct you to flip slides when I'm ready then. So this is a sample of your peer group and your universe. So as I walk through the presentation, I will reference both your peers and the universe. Your plan is $13.9 billion at the end of 2022. Your peer group includes 13 peers with assets ranging from 3.7 to 18.2 billion in assets. And on median assets for the plan for your peers is around 11.6. The other thing I'd like to highlight on this slide is the account size. So your account size is a little bit smaller than your peers. You're at 34,000 versus 50,000 and slightly different allocations. So 25% of retired or separated with assets in the plan. And then your indexation, the amount of assets that are tied toward index low-cost index options is at 39% versus the peers at 60 and your universe at 69. So that that will have a direct drive on your cost structure and we'll highlight that as we walk through the presentation. Can you flip to the next slide, please? So you're you have 12 investment options, which includes your Goalmaker Target Date suite. And so this lists those options that that are available there. You do have a default option going into that Goalmaker Target Date offering, as does most of the the peers and the universe. We've effectively seen that trend move almost to everyone having their default option go into target strategies now. Very little has no default option for their their members. Can you flip to the next slide, please? So your weighted average cost per member was 26.4 basis points or worked out to on average $98 per participant. This was this was slightly above the peer average at 25.4 and about five basis points above the peer universe, which includes a lot of corporate plans. So a little different structure than yours. We want to flip to the next slide? So your participants' weighted average cost decreased from 33 basis points down to 24.6. A couple of drivers for that, we we're seeing a decline in your investment costs as a result of your.
This is Bob Shea. I'm sorry to interrupt. Is is that a typo on the slide or did you just misspeak? It says 26.4 on the page.
Sorry, what did I say?
24.6.
Sorry, that is I I misspoke. I apologize.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, the the slide is correct. I misspoke. I apologize. So during the period, so the primary reason for the decline that we're seeing overall is indexing, that people are moving to more index options. And so you're seeing that amongst your peers. You your investment costs were coming down because of you you had lower administrative costs over that time period. I believe you renegotiated some contracts during that period. Can we flip to the next slide? Your peer-based benchmark costs are fairly well in line with your your costs. So you're coming in at 26.4 and your custom peer-based benchmark is coming in at 26.2. So a 30 basis point difference, sorry, a 3.3 basis point difference, which is negligible. The the primary driver of the distance is your participants' allocation to index versus active options. So what that means is because your plan tilts more heavily towards active asset allocation solutions, there's a higher cost for that. That's contributing an extra five basis points to your costs. I'm referencing this table on the bottom right of the slide. That five basis points is offset by fees for similar investment options. You have lower cost options for other strategies available on your platform and your administrative costs are 2.6 basis points below peers of similar-sized plans. Can we flip to the next slide, please? So this summarizes your investment options. We break this slide down into a number of different factors. So cost, returns, net return over a five-year, net value add, which is the return over the benchmark, less costs, and then value add over a five-year period, and risk for your target date options. So from a cost standpoint, it's a good news story. You're at or below your peer median across all of the funds that you offer. So you are, that comes back to my point earlier, you're offering low-cost options and you can see that in that first column. In the second column, you're effectively at the benchmark or higher than the benchmark across all your options. There is one fixed income offering, the multi-manager fixed income offering that is in sort of slightly below the median. And so you're seeing that have an impact. Your five-year net returns are mixed. There are some star performers in the equity space at the top and then some some below-average performers in the middle with, sorry, I'm having difficulty seeing the slides here. With your small to mid, your international options, thank you for making that larger, and your international fixed income options. Some of the short end of your target date funds are also on the lower end of performance. In this case, in the five-year column, where there is blanks, it's likely because the strategy doesn't have a five-year track record with the plan and we can't report on that. So that is the reason why you're seeing a blank on some of the longer-dated target date funds, which are new to the plan, and some of the shorter newer target date funds that just don't have the established track record yet. So value add is good. You're offering, your plan is generating value add. It's for the most part below the benchmark. Um, it's for the most part below the benchmark, um, on the one-year period. That is not unusual. Over the longer-term period, that five-year column beside it, you are seeing good value add across a number of your options. The risk profile on the short end of your target date strategies is good. You're below the benchmark, uh, across multiple options you're seeing there on the, on the right. Um, and so we'll just flip forward to the next slide. We'll review the rest of the target date funds. So this is the remainder of the target date funds. Your cost picture is the same. You're at, at or below peer median. Your, uh, net returns are good across many of the mandates. Um, your, your, your five-year net returns are even better. Your value add is in that low quartile over a one-year period, but high over that five-year period. So you are aggregating value for your members over the longer term. Again, those blanks in the five-year columns are all because those strategies are newer, um, and just don't have that track record. And your risk in some of the aggressive portfolios is a little high. That's not uncommon for an aggressive portfolio. Um, and, but your, but the other options are of more balanced risk. Can we flip forward to the next slide, please? It's just, uh, this is a glide path of your performance for 2022. 2022 was a really bad year for performance. Both fixed income and equity had big drawdowns and we're seeing that in many target date options. Um, and so your glide path is, uh, underwater. You're doing well on the short end, but slight underperformance versus the peer median on the longer end of your glide path. Can we flip forward to the next slide? The average risk of your target date funds is, uh, generally at the market. Um, or your peer, I should say not the market, but your peer average. So nothing to be too concerned about here. Again, some, on the lower end of the curve, you are a little bit below, uh, the risk, uh, the median risk and the average risk of your peers, but on the longer end, you're a little bit higher. Flip forward to the next slide, please. So your five-year average total net return was 4.8%. Um, again, because of last, this is for your plan overall, not your target date options. Um, your can you, can you roll the slide down just a touch or make it? There we go. So you had 4.8% return for your five-year, uh, average. The median was 4.8%. So you're rate in line. Uh, you can see the five, you can see the one-year number for 2022 was quite stark. Again, that's prominently by negative fixed income and equity markets compounding the issue. So you were down 15%. You're, the peer median was down 15.6%. So it did add value even in the face of challenging, uh, market backdrop. Let's flip forward to the next slide, please. The differences in part, sorry, too far. So differences in participant weighted average net total return are a result in differences in collective fund allocations and, and, and and asset category returns. Uh, and so what we're seeing here is your, your performance in the top right on a five-year average against your peers. Um, in a basically in line with your target date option, 4.2 versus 4.4 for the peers and 4.3 for the universe. Um, in line on U.S. stocks at around 8.1, 8.2, underperformance in your global non-U.S. stocks. Um, your bonds were, uh, did underperform the peer average by 50 basis points. So that is a big difference in that space. Stable values consistent with the, the broader markets. Your real assets, including real estate, hedge funds and others, um, did underperform peers 2.6 versus 3 and the universe at 4.3. And you don't have a money market option. So that is, uh, obviously blank. Um, the bottom is just your five-year asset, oops, five-year asset allocation. I won't dwell on that. We talked a little bit about that already. So those are my prepared remarks on your, on your plan. Happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, Christopher III, this is, uh, State Treasurer Falwell. Uh, thank you for that information. On page seven, your participant weighted average total cost was 26.4 basis points or $98 per participant.
Yep.
The peer is 159 per participant.
Yeah. So the reason for the big difference-
So how could our cost per participant be lower when our basis point cost is higher?
Yeah. So that's an excellent question. I asked the same question when I saw the report earlier. It has to do with the average account size and the number of accounts that you have. So your average account size is a lot smaller. Um, and the average account sizes are a lot bigger. So their fees they're paying for their accounts are a lot higher because the AUM level is a lot larger. So that, that really- Sorry, I didn't hear you there, sir.
Bad comment. I said, you're, it's, my opinion, this is Greg Patterson, the 98 and the 159. That's not what you want to compare. It's somewhat meaningless.
Yeah, the basis points is really, um, a better representation, um, because it, it doesn't factor in account size. The dollar amount, uh, is skewing the numbers because the average account size for your peer group was 49,000 versus 34,000 for your plan. And so that's why the dollar amount of the plan looks a lot larger. But your basis point is more in line with the average.
So more, uh, more passive would drop this down, make us more-
Yeah, your, your, your basis- Yeah, your basis points would definitely come down if you moved your passive from that. I think it was around 39% of your plan is passive to the industry average of 60, uh, 60 to 70%. Your, your basis points, the cost per member would come down significantly with more passive options. The offset to that is you're giving up potential active, um, asset allocation alpha that the managers that your consultant have selected would be able to offer your members. So that the offsetting cost to moving more passive is potentially less net value add for your members. So it is a trade-off that you would need to, uh, with your consultant to address. Um, but the, the, the basis points that you would save would be right to the bottom line and the prospect of the alpha is not guaranteed. So there is a trade-off there.
All right. Uh, Christopher, uh, at no additional cost, if you don't have anything else to do one day, I'd like for you to look at, uh, how this number would look for our elders' participants versus our teasers. Elders is the local government, teasers is the state system. And I've been unsuccessful since Nels was nominated by the governor and approved by the General Assembly. He's got more juice than I do these days. But, uh, I was unsuccessful in getting an appropriation this year of at least a $25 match into our 401 or 457 because as our members know, the gap between our participate, participation rate gap between our local employees and our state employees who are all in the same pension plan, there's a 50% gap as far as the participation rate. Cause many of the locals match. Uh, some I would just give it to them, but we do nothing. And that's why I think as far as retirement readiness, especially for our low and fixed income, our, our lower paid employees, that's why I'm not in favor of it being a percentage. I don't need this. But our lower paid employees do need this. And I'd like for you to look at that efficiency as it relates to those two subsets, if you ever have an opportunity to do that. Because I think that obviously with the surplus, budget surpluses that North Carolina's running, there's enough juice there to do a $25 match, but I think a $25 match is $119 million recurring every year. Budgetarily, that's how big that is. Or a $50 match. One of the two is 120 million bucks. So, uh, anyway, I, I think if we can get any kind of match at all in our 401 or 457, our participation rate would go up. AUM would go up and these numbers would look better.
We're happy to help. Sir, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm assuming you were directing that me, Chair? Is that correct?
Yes.
You're jerking at the other Christopher.
I'm looking for an analysis of, uh, well, Christopher's got work to do on the passive side. I'm looking for an analysis of you that can give Nels the tools that he needs, uh, to go to the General Assembly with me, uh, and possibly get this match started.
Sure, we'll, we'll be happy to help with that.
You, you can't, you can't manage what you can't measure and I'm just trying to figure out how to measure.
We'll be happy to help with that and we can work. Sorry.
Go ahead, Nelson.
In, in that line of thinking, so many state agencies with 10, 20, 30% vacancy rates, their payrolls haven't been cut by that, but they're having a very hard time recruiting. And just having the legal authority with no new money to use existing salary money where employers can give incentive bonuses, recruitment bonuses and have matched to 401K just be on the menu as an allowable tool that agency, HR departments, uh, agencies who are having a tough, difficult time recruiting can at least have the authority, legal authority to do that would cost no money.
Right.
And would be very helpful for those very hard to recruit positions.
Excellent point.
Big vacancies.
Thank you. And it's hard to imagine a $25 per month match cost 119 million a year, but it does. Cause that's what, that's what the fiscal note on that, it's outscored. So that kind of blew them away. I didn't, I didn't have them at hello. Yeah, because it's a recurring, it's a recurring thing. So, okay. Anything else? I've dominated this. Christopher, any other questions for CEM? Thank you, Christopher.
Thank, thank you all for your time.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the Christopher here. Um, do we have a rationale why the stock non-U.S. and global was the one fun, uh, area, asset class that lagged so far behind?
Yeah, I mean, the underlying managers' performance on that. I think we've talked about some of the struggles that specifically Bailey Gifford had.
All right.
The end in, the end of 2022. So that was a little-
Okay.
It was the underlying performance of those managers that would drive.
That's been taken care of.
I thought Bailey Gifford was hitting home runs.
Oh, they had a, they're, they're pretty up and down. I mean, they're, they're a pretty volatile manager in general. So they, they had a phenomenal run in 2019 into 2020. And then, um, it turned around a bit for them. So, um, but this year they're doing well again. So.
Okay. Good question. All right. Uh, any other questions on that matter? So we're, unlike the pension plan, which is the most efficient in North America, this one's not. Correct?
Well, I think what he's saying with this is that because of our, because of our allocation to active versus versus passive, that, that's adding five basis points to that. So.
We're at median basically overall.
But even, even with that five basis points, we would not be the most efficient. I mean, DB, DC plan.
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The other floor.
Good morning, everyone, and thanks for your time. Mike McCann and Matt Herman with Empower. So we'll try to be succinct with our update today, but by all means, if there's any questions for us as we go through, we'll update to ask. Um, so for, for today's update, I want to focus on some of the highlights from, uh, second quarter. We're viewing as we typically do our metrics and, uh, some really nice results to share there. Before I dive into that though, just a quick update on, uh, the migration. Uh, so for, for those of you that have remembered my comments from the past couple of board meetings, Empower successfully purchased credentials, retirements, book of business. Those, your plans today still sit on a heritage credential record keeping platform. The project to move those over to Empower's record keeping platform has officially kicked off. Currently, the North Carolina plans are slotted to move in February of 2024, specifically that first weekend of, of February 2024. So, um, a few weeks back, we had the initial kickoff webinar for that project of all of the clients that are going to be in that February 2024. What was great about that was there was over a thousand. Over 60% of those folks that dialed in were North Carolina sub-plans. So tremendous. Burnout by all of the sub-plans. I'm going to be critical to the success of this project as we work through those sub-plans, the process to load their payroll, moving that process from the credential platform to the Empower platform, getting all of their users at that sub-plan to verify their, their security, um, just so that they can be set up properly on the Empower platform.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can everyone mute their phone if they're not speaking?
All right. Hopefully, uh, hopefully that took care of it, Wyndham. Um, yeah, thanks. We don't hear anything in the room. So, uh, that's helpful. And then, and then the training that they're going to need to do their, their plan sponsor functions every day. So we'll have much more to share as the project rules out. The key milestones as we get further into the year are going to be around those, those payroll processes for, for, uh, sub-plans. And then the, the user security, working very closely and diligently with, uh, with Jeff and his team on each step of, uh, the migration process. Uh, any, any questions for me? I went, I went a lot deeper on migration last quarter. Uh, but any, any questions for me today related to migration? Okay. So we'll have a, we'll have, uh, we'll continue to update you when these meetings go on. I think our next meeting's like, uh, the week after Thanksgiving. So I'll, I'll again, update you on how we're coming through that process. In terms of the, uh, the board report, uh, let's start on this, on slide four of the report. And, uh, continue to see in terms of the, uh, you know, the big key things that we look at quarter after quarter, continue to see a, a similar theme that we see, uh, over the rolling months in terms of contributions versus distributions. The average participant balance, um, big recovery, as you know, with the equity market so far this year. Uh, we're now at a 13-month high in terms of the average participant balance. Um, the active participation rate, it has come down a little bit, but I think it's important to note that this graph kind of skews it a little bit. We're still over 34%. Um, up until a few years ago, that number was typically in like the 28, 29 range and has now consistently been over 34% for, for a couple of years. And then the average active, the active average employee deferral continues to set new records, um, month after month. We're, we're over $255 is the, uh, the average there. On, on slide five, good metrics on slide five as well. Um, total participant. Participants with the balance that continues to, uh, set all-time highs. We're now, we're over 300,000. Uh, really strong enrollment numbers year-to-date. We set an all-time record last year in terms of enrollments. For the first time, um, you know, Matt's going to speak to the success that his team in the field's having here in a little bit. But, uh, we're continuing to be on pace to, uh, perhaps even, um, you know, meet or eclipse that this year as well. Goalmaker participation rate is steady as it, as it continues to be. And, uh, the number of new loans, that's consistent as well with, uh, the historical trend line. Um, that's something that, uh, is always a key thing to watch in terms of like a potential headwind. Um, so always something there to monitor in case there's any spikes.
Is there much education that goes on around loans and the negative effect that that?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, uh, significant when either, whenever they would even call into our call center, uh, work directly with a counselor on Matt's team or even, um, online. There's education there about, you know, the, uh, drawbacks. If you do decide to pursue this, but knowing, but it is an option available to you if you decide to. the drawbacks if you do decide to pursue this, but knowing, but it is an option available to you if you decide to.
Thanks.
Yep. So far this year, slide six. Big, big new thing here for slide six, six new employer adoptions so far this year. And then 17 through the second quarter, 17 employers have either added, changed, or enhanced their employer contribution program. That speaks to the comments that Treasurer was, was making a few moments ago in terms of what those benefits would be if there were any type of an employer contribution on the state side. For those of you that are newer board members on the local side, we've got about, oh, approximately 450 local subplan players that offer some type of a, of a match or employer contribution. And to the Treasurer's point, you literally see the active participation rate in those subplans two times, sometimes even three times higher than what you'll see in a subplan that does not offer any type of a employer contribution program. And then, then lastly, for my prepared remarks today, Patty, we slide 35 of the presentation. Couple of years ago, the Treasurer asked us to start tracking the percentage of assets saved. So what we do is we take a look at all of the participants that have separated from service and are eligible to roll their plans out. And then we track, do those assets and participants stay in the program, knowing that they're eligible to stay in the program? And what, you know, with the overall program that you've built, the benefits of staying in plan, or are those assets rolling out? And for the last quarter, of all those assets that were eligible to roll out, 96, 96.19% remained in the plan. Now, that's, that's a phenomenal statistic, but because of the size of your plan, it's also important to note, $500 million still rolled out last year. And you can see on the page, we track those top, top 10 firms in terms of where those assets are going. So I think, I think that's one of the things, when we get onto Empower's platform, one of the true differentiators in terms of what Empower brings to the marketplace versus Prudential brought to the marketplace is really that advice component of helping participants when they want that help in terms of being in that state of staying in plan or listening to that broker down the street. Those are the additional services that we can bring to you that hopefully at the right time, we can bring to the board for consideration.
So do those firms have active marketing programs to go after participants as they leave?
Oh, absolutely. You'd be, you'd be amazed at what we see. There's probably the best story that we can tell to help relate this is, you know, there's been times where we've been doing group meetings or benefit fairs, and local brokers will hear that we're doing those sessions, and participants will leave and go to their car, and they'll have like something on their windshield, trying to get them to come, come over and listen to them. Yeah.
And I guess to, to that further, we do have, I don't know how they've gotten, how they've gotten the email addresses, but there are, but there are brokers who actively send emails to people seeing if they would like to set up an appointment to speak with them. I've, I've gotten, I've gotten probably a dozen of them since I've been here. So we know that there's people who are actively reaching out to our folks. And in the absence of giving them any kind of guidance on our own, I think these guys are having, having a little bit of, a little bit of, of success with our folks, especially Edward Jones.
All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Herman to give an update on 18 dedicated retirement.
Thanks, Mike. Good morning, members of the board staff. Pleased to be here today. I'll jump in, I'll share some numbers. I'm going to start on page 37. I just wanted to offer up congratulations again for the recent Agda Award for our work last year in October. Congratulations to staff, just a phenomenal campaign. Covered that in the last couple of board meetings. It seems like a while ago, but that recognition, I think, is another reinforcement of innovation, the amazing program that you all make. Just the tremendous resources that are out there. We had over 9,500 live engagements in October last year, which was during that campaign. It was just a phenomenal, congratulations again. Sticking in line with campaigns, because of the work we've been doing in October, we actually decided to replicate that and do about six months later, another campaign. We started that last year in May. It's our May Spring Education Campaign. We did it again this year. It was a huge success. And as I go through the numbers, I think one of the things you'll see in Q2 was the work we did in May. It was a big drive from the momentum we saw last quarter. We had over 10,500 live engagements in the month of May this year, which was well above where we were last year and even beat our October numbers. So, you know, we're actively planning for October this year. We're taking those learnings from May and we're seeing what we can do. But across the month, we do a lot of different general education sessions. We'll do sessions on beneficiary management and market volatility. There's a lot of topics that we focused on during March of May, and we saw really good results from that campaign. We're talking about Q2 today, but as we speak, we actually have a campaign move right now that's focused on first responders. So those who are firefighters, police officers, law enforcement, those on the front lines serving. We're doing a lot of special things this month at a statewide level, regional, and a local level. And then it's back to school month, so in the K through 12 space with our 115 school systems, we're doing a lot there to actively educate those that are going back to school. We're actually piloting the first time a principal webinar. We have over 3,000 principals across the state, and we're doing a webinar specifically focused on them. So, you know, K through 12 space, I've talked about a number of times in the past, it's a big opportunity area for us. So more to come on that. I'll share results of this month when we meet again. But a lot of good things happening, and I think a lot of that stemmed from this board, the recognition, the innovation that came. I would draw your attention to page 37. You'll see a breakdown of our engagements year-to-date. Top half of the page, you'll see a month-by-month view of the second quarter. And on the bottom of the page, you'll see the roll-up for Q1, Q2. Again, you see, one of the things that jumps out is the really strong engagement that occurred in May. 10,569 engagements, just tremendous results from that campaign. With that being said, April and June were very strong as well. June, we typically see a lull because of the summer months, June and July, summer vacation, schools out, the weather's nice. People tend to not set up one-on-one meetings or attend group meetings as much. That being said, we still had almost 7,000 engagements. A lot of that came from the campaign in May. We'll see folks attended and set up appointments, you know, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks later. So we see some of the residual benefits of that campaign that we did in May. For Q2, we had 24,941 total engagements. That's 25% higher than where we were last year in Q2. The big jump also was in group meetings. If you look, 209 group meetings in April, 260 in May, 177 in June. Those numbers combined for Q2, we were 33% higher than we were last year. So we're seeing a lot of growth in group meetings in particular. And I think some of that's because we're still coming out of the pandemic and we're getting help a little more, a little more each month. When you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see the roll-up. Q1, which we covered in our last meeting, and then Q2, again, you see a nice jump in group meetings, group meeting attendees. Our year-to-date total for group meetings, 1,188, and almost 30,000 attendees for the year in our group meetings. That's almost 30% higher than where we were last year year-to-date. So a nice trend line there. The other thing that I think is a big jump are onsite visits. And we went from 214 in the first quarter to 306 in the second quarter. We're right now at about a 70-30 split. Last meeting, we were at about 75-25. So 70% of our work is virtual, either on the web or via the phone. The other 30% were face-to-face. What we're seeing and what we're hearing from a lot of employers is out there is they like the flexibility of what we call this hybrid model. There's efficiency for them, there's benefits for them. Sometimes they may not want us onsite and they'd rather do something virtual. So we're making it very flexible for the thousand or so sub-employers out there and all the participants. And, and we get a lot of folks that call us and they want to meet in person, and we'll go to certain events. We have a lot of appointments we do virtually, and a lot of our group meeting activity virtually. But we are seeing that steady increase in getting back out more and more. Total attendees, when you look at Q1 and Q2, we're over 43,000, 43,300 to be exact. And that's almost 20% higher than last year at this time. So really good traction on our engagements. One of the things you don't see on this page, and to some of the comments Mike shared about retention, and what we see out there is we have a lot of retirees that engage us. So we continue our outreach campaign. In between our formal group meetings, our formal one-on-ones, we're doing retiree courtesy calls. We have over 2,000 of those calls made year-to-date. And it's just a really important help, reminding them we're here for them, reminding them that they don't have to leave this plan and that we're here to answer their questions. You know, invariably, Treasurer will stumble upon needs that are out there, positive response. During our May campaign, one of the managers actually shared with me that they called an individual who had just retired to find out that that individual had just passed away unfortunately. Was able to connect with the spouse, with the widow, and walk them through their options and connect them with the resources that are in to help them. So there are a lot of different needs out there, and it's something we take seriously, so we continue to make those calls as well. The other thing on this page I'll call out before I move to the final couple of slides is the numbers on employer meetings. So while we're serving the needs of participants and employees out there, we have around 450,000 eligible. We also have 1,000 sub-employers out there. So each counselor works with roughly about 100 employers, cities, counties, municipalities, school systems, to meet their needs. When you look at the numbers on our employer meetings, we've had over 1,800 year-to-date. And that's trending about where it was last year, given the things that Mike shared about migration. I would expect that to pick up in the coming months and quarters. I'll move to page 38. Engagement is really strong, and so too are the actions Mike shared earlier. We had 5,994 enrollments in the second quarter, about 2% higher than where we were last year in the second quarter. When you add that with Q1, we've had 12,317 enrollments in this program year-to-date. That's almost exactly where we were last year at this time. And as Mike shared, last year was a record-setting year. We had more people taking action last year to improve retirement readiness than ever before. And we're trending at the same level right now, which is really exciting to see. Finally, actions by employees are critical, and so too are actions by the employers. And you'll see a breakdown of 39, 40, and 41, a breakdown of those employers. When we're meeting with them, we want them to take action to help us bring education to folks, to connect folks to the resources we offer. But we also like to see employers taking action to adopt things, either adopting the plan, adopting employer contribution programs, adopting some of the optional features, and we're seeing record levels of that. Mike mentioned the adoptions that have happened year-to-date. We've had almost 25 employers take action through the second quarter. Really, really big increases in employer contributions, both new contribution programs being added, these have been match programs, we're enhancing ones that are in place. The most recent data we're seeing, we're 70% higher in those actions year-to-date than we were last year at this time. So really exciting to see employers connecting us to people, but also taking actions themselves. So a lot going on right now. Next time we meet, I'll kind of give you a snapshot of the next 90 days. We'll be wrapping up the K through 12 stuff we're doing, as well as the first responder campaign. But about a month and a half from now, we'll be starting the National Safe for Retirement Month campaign. So looking forward to that. A lot of good stuff taking place, but a lot of work to do. But mid-year, we're looking really good, both on actions and engagements. And congratulations again to this board for the recognition by Agda, and thank you again for your partnership and your support. Have any answering questions?
Questions from, from out? Questions from the board?
I just have a general question on, on slide 40. Right, so the Treasurer talked about the fact that there's no match at the state level. But yet some of these municipalities are up to 5%. Is that sustainable?
I mean, with something that we actually talk a lot about when we meet with Tom and Jeff and team every month is focusing on that's a risk. You know, because they have other responsibilities and obligations. We have not seen any this year drop their contribution programs or eliminate them. But that's something we are always mindful of, and that's part of our discussions with employers is reminding them how important those programs are. You know, occasionally over the years, I'm sure some have dropped here and there, but, you know, it's surprising we don't see a lot of eliminations of those.
It's interesting because, I mean, corporate-wise, right, is the average around 4%? For? Yeah, I'd say the average is probably around 4.
Yeah, I'd say you, you might see a little bit higher when corporations no longer offer their employees DB plans. Yeah. Or it's probably about the average.
I will say, one of the things that was mentioned earlier, we see a lot with the employers right now, is a focus on acquiring talent and retaining talent. You know, there's, there's been a lot of turnover over the last few years during the pandemic. Saw a lot in the school systems, but in general, we see it in a lot of municipalities. And these programs, I think, one of the reasons we're seeing them increase, I think they're using it to retain people and also get folks to apply and take roles, so.
Mr. Shay, in that regard, our Treasurer, Chairman also wears another hat as Chair or Leader of the Local Government Commission, which ensures all local governments have a solid financial position. Not 100% of them are in that, but the state is well situated to also monitor the financial position of local governments to ensure they're stable and viable, sustainable operations going forward.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this up. I'll just add quickly that when I presented the County Commissioner Association League of Municipalities, which is two governing groups that oversee 100 counties and 553 cities, they complained about the employer contribution rate for the pension plan. And I told them seven years ago, it's going to double. It has nothing to do with me or Janet Cow or Richard Moore. It had to do with 9/11 and the Great Financial Crisis, and the assumed rate of return, and not hitting that for 22 years, which Greg heard about yesterday in the Investment Advisory Committee he sits on. And well, it's happening. It's really happening. And so I sort of say as nicely as I can, you can't talk about your crumbling water and sewer systems. And on the sewer systems, the holes are in the top of the pipe, which means it's collecting rainwater, which means we're processing rainwater, which is a cost. But the water systems, the holes are at the bottom of the pipe. So what you pay for is not what you could bill for. So you can't complain about all that when you're doing these matches. You, you can't complain about all, everything. And so I think that they're going to have to make some choices about how they do this. And some of them is not even a match, right? It's, it's just a.
Across the board.
Yeah. It's across the board. And, and it, and it's not quite, it's not, it's not salary, it's only limited by the Internal Revenue Service. It's not limited by the municipality. So if somebody makes $100,000, it's about a grand. Somebody making $30,000 is, you know, getting 150, you know, just a minimal amount of money. I think it's a big issue. I think it, I think it needs to be discussed. And you're exactly right, and it, it is not sustainable, in my opinion. Because it's, it's a big deal. I mean, on, on the calendar coming up this next month in LGC, there's like $850 million worth of debt for Charlotte. And then the airports, all kinds of things. I won't get into it, but that doesn't include the $2.5 billion bond referendum they want to do. So all these things just sort of raise the cost of, of government. Everybody thinks about our depopulating areas. Some of them have 50, 60% reserve balances, twice the state average. Some of these urban districts are running at 14%. It's, it's a, it's not as pretty as it may look.
Doing both, define DB and DC plans, which is prevalent across all local governments, is very unique, probably rare. But that's common practice.
It was easy to do when the employer contribution rates were 7% of payroll. This year it's 12.1, I believe. The state is 16.3, not including the healthcare, which is another 8%. So it's, this is not political, it's not emotional, it is purely mathematical what some of these challenges are. Anything else I'd like to add to that?
Sure.
Thanks for bringing it up. I want to direct staff to, to present to all the, not present, hand out to all the board members next time the nice little placard sheet that showed all the, all the ABC boards, all the counties and all the cities that have a 401, 457 match. I think it was just, it was on one piece of papers. And it was laminated, not laminated, but, you know, it was. And it was not laminated, but you know, it was durable. And so they can see all the cities and counties that are actually doing these matches. Hello, Mr. Treasurer, Board, and Staff. I'm Paul Engicky with Galliard Capital Management. I'll be out there in the break room in granola bars, so if you need something, feel free to get it. In a matter of time, I will keep my comments, you know, pretty concise here, and I guess we can start with page five. Just want to give a reiteration of some news that came out in the beginning of June. It's not listed on this page, but we did announce that Kate Burt, who's out of Nashville, will be joining Allspring, who is our parent company, as its president, and will be appointed to the Allspring Board of Directors as well. We're excited to welcome Kate in, this newly created role that will focus on strategy and execution of Allspring's transformation as an independent company. Kate will report directly to Allspring CEO, Joe Sullivan, and will begin in September. Kate has two decades of experience as Chief Operating Officer and CFO of Alliance Bernstein, and was named one of the Most Powerful Women in Finance in 2022 by American Banker. Kate will have broad responsibility across Allspring, and will have direct responsibility on investments, Galliard particularly, engineering and technology finance in the Office of Chief Operating Officer. The reason I bring up Kate, as well as that Mike Norman, President of our firm, will be reporting up to Kate, and Kate will be reporting up to Joe Sullivan. Joe will retain his CEO responsibility and the Chairman of the Board of Directors, and he's going to focus more on direct client-related functions like distribution, product and marketing and communications, and chief legal office. So just want to give you a quick point there. So again, Kate will be joining us in September. We turn to page seven, under section two. Kind of, you know, speaking of money market funds and where we are on the yield curve, just want to provide an update at 6:30. I provided this over the past couple of quarters. And again, what we see is the movement of interest rates, mostly on the short end of the yield curve through June 30th. The green line on the page, which is the light green, that shows the Fed funds rate, and really that has risen since March 17th of '22 from about 0 to 0.25%. Had 11 increases, and now where you're at, I believe 5 to 5 and 1/4%. And the last increase was on July 26th. The three-year cost of maturity treasury, that's the light blue line, you know, that is really an indicator of how fixed income yields have been doing as well. We do see that little note there, that fixed income returns were not great in '22, as these interest rates did skyrocket. And finally, the dark green, kind of U-shaped line, again, is Galliard's Stable Value Separate Account Crediting Rates, net of fees. You know, as I mentioned previously, the state of North Carolina's Stable Value Crediting Rate will move higher, all else being equal, and that, I mean by no significant outflows, as it follows interest rate movements. And again, it has a lag due to the book value smoothing of returns. As of June 30th, that yield was 2.70% on the right-hand of the page there. And again, you know, we do take into account for that crediting rate. We take the amortization of the market-to-book deficit, which is currently under 100. And again, that was the underlying fixed income returns, having that negative return in '22. We're about 93% right now. But that again is offset by the reinvestment at current yields, which I believe as of 6:30 was about 5.29%. So typical, you know, what we've seen maybe in the money market range as well. So, you know, I will, I'll cover, you know, kind of the historical last nine quarters in the next few pages. But with these increases in yields, North Carolina, again, is able to invest at 5.29%. 91-day T-bills, which is kind of a proxy for money market funds, is about 5.4%. And three-year cost of maturity treasuries are at 4.49%, which really emphasizes that the yield curve, which is normally, which normally should be sloped up and to the right, where it's showing that yields for ultra-short maturities, zero to two years, you know, have historically been, you know, 0%. Now they're at 5.4%. Where you look at even three years out, it's at 4.49%. So we are seeing that inversion of the yield curve, and that is not typical. So that's one thing to keep in mind when considering, you know, options for the plan, that in a typical, normal yield curve environment, the further you go out on the curve, the higher the yield should be. But right now, it's inverted, and this has happened maybe a handful of times in the last 35 years, you know, on one hand, you can count them. So, you know, even with this, you know, this near-term disadvantage compared to, you know, the short-term rates, stable value does provide long-term benefits over money market funds. I mentioned this last quarter, but again, the three things I like to point to is that money market funds are limited in what they can invest, mainly ultra-short US government securities, let's say, commercial paper, CDs, repurchase agreements, and cash. On the other hand, stable value is able to invest in a diversified way across all investment-grade sectors of the bond market, which include treasuries, but also with longer durations, and non-treasury spread sectors like corporates, taxable municipal bonds, and securitized investments like mortgage-backed securities, asset-backed securities, commercial mortgage-backed securities, et cetera, which really provide a broader opportunity set for investment. Second, stable value can invest in longer-duration securities. And again, in a typical, you know, normal sloped yield curve, you know, that really provides enhanced yield. So right now, the duration is about 3.35 years on a weighted average basis, you know, and then stable value can even invest past, you know, five years. So, you know, even looking at the buckets of where your stable value fund is invested now, between the three- and five-year buckets, there's about 25% in five years plus, we're at about 23%. Whereas money market funds, weighted average duration, you know, is typically from 90 days to one year. So again, in a normally sloped yield curve environment, stable value durations are yield enhancers. And third, due to the book value smoothing of returns, stable value returns have less volatility, but also stronger long-term returns, five, 10 years, and even 12 and 1/2 years, which is the inception with North Carolina. So, you know, again, the change in the interest rates on the underlying bonds has had a big effect on fixed income returns, as you saw in '22. But participants were spared the negative returns that a market value bond investor would have experienced. So combined with the smoothing aspects, participants investing in stable value have had lower return volatility, and more impressive risk measures of performance like Sharpe and information ratios over the long-term five, 10, 12 and 1/2 years. Again, as mentioned earlier, you know, the last 15 to 20 years, money market yields were near zero. And, you know, it's performing as it, you know, as it has because the Fed has raised rates and the abnormal shape of the yield curve. So kind of a lot to digest there, but is there any questions on this page? This is just basically showing how quickly yields have gone up, and whether it's sustainable in the future, again, Galliard doesn't make interest rate bets. But, you know, again, yield curve, from what we've seen historically, it's an inverted yield curve right now, and, you know, it's not a normal thing that we see. Well, if we want to move ahead to page eight. Yeah, in the pension plan, we're footing billions of dollars to work 550, 600 basis points. But we have not had that opportunity since some of you were born. So, literally. So anyway, it's bad for our economy and our citizens and our fixed income. Finding a nice tailwind to the DB plan. That really is having an effect on inflation, and that's really the main impetus of why the Fed has raised rates on the short. Page eight really gives you a snapshot where we are as of June 30th. And again, the characteristics on this page show, you know, stable value is performing exactly as we intend in this market environment. We see net asset value, the amount of assets in the plan as of June 30th. You know, it was down roughly 12, 12.9 million from last quarter, really de minimis, it's a half a percent. You know, and that really came from participant outflows, you know, about 29.3 million, offset by 16.3 million in the investment earnings. On the lower left-hand portion of the page, on the portfolio characteristics, you know, we see, you know, the average quality of the market value. So even with the Fitch downgrade of US government debt from AAA to AA+, Galliard doesn't anticipate this will materially change how we run our portfolios, or how it will affect our clients. You know, we did obtain waivers from each of our stable value contract issuers early in the spring that permits us to continue to treat US government securities as AAA in the event of a related downgrade, with the wrappers providing protection at least through the end of September. So again, you know, in response to the Fitch downgrade, you know, we agree that there is a solution that does not disrupt the investment securities within our stable value account. So we haven't seen really, you know, a big effect of this downgrade. We haven't seen it in the market as well, so good news there. The blended yield after fees, you know, that's the crediting rate that I talked about. Again, that's moving upwards, again, from 2.53 last quarter to 2.7, up 17 basis points, and that's net of all fees. And the yields maturity, as I mentioned before, again, with the rate hike we had in the second quarter, we did see yields jump 48 basis points from 4.1 to 5.9. So duration, pretty, pretty the same. Market book, it did drop a little bit, but again, that was due to interest rates going up, nothing to do with the underlying securities in the portfolios. We look at the right-hand part of the page, again, assets remain pretty consistent. Portfolio distribution, more right-hand corner. Again, you know, one thing that we are really showing here is that we are remaining fully invested, and we're not changing our investment philosophy, even though money market funds or cash is returning a lot higher. You know, we stick to our investment philosophy, and we're not changing it due to changes, you know, in interest rates that we've seen. So again, we're still consistent in the allocations between the short and the long portfolios. Any questions on page eight? Page nine shows kind of the performance as of June 30th. And, you know, again, the stable value fund for North Carolina has performed in line with expectations, again, in the current interest rate environment. So again, you know, we do see the underperformance versus, you know, the three-year cost of maturity treasury yield. And again, not even wanting to compare it as underperformance, it's just comparative. Again, three-year cost of maturity treasuries, they have implicit reaction to interest rates immediately, whereas stable value has that lag. Again, so, you know, even the ICE, Bank of America, you know, three-month T-bill index plus 150 basis points, that's a rough approximation of money market yields, plus an additional 150 basis points a year, which is a pretty, pretty tough proxy, especially in an increased interest rate environment. But if we kind of strip away that 150 basis points, again, I looked at, you know, it's not on this page, but Morningstar Money Market Fund, All taxable Universe Media, you know, basically had returns for the three-month about 1.1% year-to-date, 2.15% in one year, 3.4%. So, you know, again, the comparison against the stable value fund, yes, it is not performing as high as the money market funds. However, if you look three-year, five-year, 10-year, and even further, you know, the state of California, or state of North Carolina's stable value fund is outperforming by over 1.2% three years, 1.2% or 1.3% five years, and about 77 basis points on the 10-year. I'm sorry, those were the returns for money market funds. So if we look at what the comparison would be, three-year, the stable value fund is outperforming the money market universe median of 86 basis points, five-year 91 basis points, and 10-years by 1.3%. So again, looking at long-term numbers, stable value has still performed as expected. I want to interrupt you because I've got to go to another meeting, and appreciate the board members giving your attention as we proceed with the rest of the agenda. In short order, what Bob had asked us about is now, I'm sitting here, I want your attention to this. I think I've been alert the whole time, but this is the first time I've ever seen a community health, first time I've ever seen a community college is on here. I'm on the community college board, and they're part teasers. And I'd never, these entries are right here on the front page, so.
They have some unique authority, and their operating statutes on managing their finances.
So my reason for pausing, Paul, is if I were going to look at participation rates between teasers and elders, then we have a few participants here who are teasers, who do have a match, that would be a, I'd try to zero it. Instead of looking at all this big universe, I'd probably just zero in on that, and see how that's working for them. And there's another example here of one county schools, which is one of our public school systems, $15 a month. So anyway, I just, sorry, Paul, I just, I've got to go, and I wanted to make sure I got that off my palate. Thank Christine for breaking it down, so. Back to stable value. And could we adjourn the meeting on range, Paul? Emily Johnson.
If we could move ahead to page 11, this just kind of shows the last nine quarters, the last nine quarters of, you know, metrics that, you know, I've kind of talked about. So upper-left-hand corner of the page, we show the historical blended yield. Again, this is the net crediting rate. You know, this is really showing that U-shaped, as described earlier. Again, we're following the path of interest rates with a lag, again, to the book value smoothing of returns. You know, we did see kind of the bottom there in the third, fourth quarter of '21, first quarter of '22. Again, we're up on the rise, and we'll continue to do so. If we look, lower-left-hand part of the page, duration, pretty consistent between three and a quarter, 3.4 years. Upper-right-hand part of the page, this is the historical market book. So again, we did enjoy, you know, a lot of that break in the second, third, and fourth quarters of '21. But then, you know, we did see interest rates go up, and then that is a direct effect on the market book, as we saw. So, you know, we're not concerned with this number being under 100%, you know, given this is what stable value funds are designed to do in increased or rising rate environments. You look at that lower-right-hand corner of the page, historical underlying yield and maturity, you know, this really shows that the drop in the market book generally corresponds to the increase in underlying yields. So, and again, as a result, in a rising interest rate environment, stable value investors gain the benefit of, one, reinvesting at that 5.29%, and, two, they're protected from the mark-to-market losses as interest rates go up and bond prices go down, so.
Paul, I want to do a quick more time. Something I wanted to show the members that Greg was participating in yesterday was our IAC meeting that talks about the pension plan's performance, and just got another ding that another pension plan was lowering their assumed rate of return to seven. They're way behind us. And so I just wanted to report the news before I leave, that now the 20-year return is right above the benchmark at 6.42%. So the steps that we've taken over the last six years to be more conservative and realistic about what the assumed rate returns are going to be, is the reason these contribution rates are up is because you've got to put more money in the plan. But I just wanted to show that to the members before I left. I promise you, when I leave, I won't interrupt you anymore. Okay, if we could turn to page 12, just want to highlight one thing that occurred over the second quarter, and I mentioned it last quarter as well. So the transition of the MetLife Insurance Company Separate Account to the Met Tower Synthetic GIC was a success that, again, happened at... That again happened on January 1st, 2023. Met Tower, you know, as a sister company of MetLife, does have the same double A minus rating. And as you notice, it does have a lower fee of 15 basis points. And there was no impact to the daily trading of participants when this, when this change occurred. You know, the Met Tower contract now wraps the underlying Dodge and Cox intermediate aggregate strategy, which is an identical strategy that the MetLife Insurance Company's separate account did before. So any questions on this page? You know, again, we've done this across our stable value separate account book of business, moving from insurance company separate accounts to an all synthetic, which is pretty consistent with what the stable value market has done as well. Okay, if we turn to page 16, B-page. Message here is, you know, yes, we had a slight decrease from last quarter. But again, if we look at from beginning of 2022, you know, due to the state of North Carolina's most favorite nation or MFN status. We did see, we did see a drop from down, from there about roughly 2% to get to where we are today. You know, one thing to note in these, in the fee table is the second row, the investment management fees paid to non-affiliated investment managers. The state of North Carolina's stable value fund currently consists of about 50% external management. So that 5.7 basis points, which accounts for roughly 21% of the fees, is due to that, that external management. So I just want to point that out there. Investment contract fees, as I mentioned, moving from the ISL insurance company's separate account to the synthetic GIC. We did see a slight decrease there. So again, fees moving in the, in the right direction. And I assume, you know, as of September 1st, that other expenses is the, the administrative fee offset. That's going to be moving to one basis point. So I assume we should see the fee third quarter around 27 basis points. Any questions here? Okay. And finally, if we move to page 20, it kind of gives you an idea of what the underlying market value performance of the bonds that make up the stable value fund have performed over the last three months. So really the, the notion, you know, what happened in the, in the second quarter is that we did see negative returns. We saw negative returns basically due to, again, that interest rate hike in May. You know, while performance was negative theme for the second quarter, really include in terms of relative performance. And that's each of these managers, including Galliard versus their underlying benchmark. You know, the outperformance really came from overweight to spread sectors. And that included corporates, asset-backed securities, commercial mortgage-backed securities as spreads tightened. Number two, overweight to the intermediate section of the yield curve helped managers outperform. And then three, given that rates went up, being shorter duration than the benchmark also was additive. So again, all the managers outperformed the second quarter except TCW. And that was due to their longer duration positioning and yield curve positioning. But they did have positive yield, positive corporate security selection. But however, they were underweight, you know, their corporate allocation versus the benchmark. So that was negative for them. But really, you know, as rates on the farther end or the intermediate part of the yield curve did go up. That hurt those that were longer duration than the benchmark. So. One thing to speak of to TCW that was in the news recently. They did announce retirements of two of the three remaining general portfolio managers. One being Landman, who's retiring at the end of 23 and Stephen Kane, who is also the co-CIO. And he's leaving at the end of 2024. But again, this does represent further meaningful changes to TCW's fixed income leadership. And that's following the retirement of, of Ted Revell in 2021. However, the TCW investment philosophy and process is a team approach with built-in redundancy that really allow for succession planning to be strengthened by its internal bench of fixed income professionals. So, you know, as a result, Galliard does not anticipate any material changes to TCW's investment philosophy and process. And as such, TCW is moved to our developing list of external managers. As our external manager oversight team formally recognizes changes, changes within the organization, team or strategy that merit further monitoring, but do not level to the, to the degree of putting them on a watch list. Now, if these changes, these retirements do have an effect on the underlying management of the TCW portfolio. We will elevate to the watch desk, but we're not doing so at this time because really retirements happen. You know, succession planning is happening. So this, this is just part of the normal course of business. But.
So it wasn't a venture of an interest getting old like me and they're going home.
We're all, you know, father time wins all battles. But really, you know, that, that, those are the prepared comments I have for today. Are there any questions on the fund at all?
Any questions? All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
And for those following along, we're going to move on to item number 10. We have Callan.
Hello, everyone. This is Elizabeth Hook from Callan, joined with MacArthur Weston Lewis. So we have a few agenda items today. Ours are more informational this quarter. So I'm going to start by setting the stage with the capital market environment, more specifically how it's impacted the options that are available to participants and give a high-level overview of those participant-level options. Weston's then going to give a few updates specific to managers within the plan. And then take a deep dive this quarter. We do this once a year, a deeper dive on stable value. Back to Galliard again. And then Chris, Christopher Morris, I think you're Christopher one, does have some related action items that we can help with that conversation if needed. But we'll go ahead and start, I'm just going to make a few quick comments on capital market environment on the next page, I guess, two pages. Yes. So we'll start with U.S. equity. This is where we've seen more of the excitement in the markets and also more participant capital is allocated here. And almost 50% of client assets are in U.S. equity between active, passive, large, small and mid-cap. It's interesting, if you look, the first thing you notice is all the bars are to the right, positive returns over the quarter, positive returns for the year. And it's really hiding what's happened over the last 18 months. So everything looks rosy here. The first three quarters of 2022, U.S. markets were down almost 25%. So from January to September of 22, we lost 25. From October 1st to June 30, markets are up almost 25%. So there's been a lot of movement within the markets. The most recent period is positive. And I mentioned that too, Mr. Shea, I think it was, made a point about looking back at the CEM report through December and some of the options were down. I think it just speaks to how quickly markets can turn and how endpoint sensitive they are. And I'll kind of circle back to that when we get to the actual performance. But specific to U.S. equity, the, the big themes are, it kind of looks like a pre-2022 environment again, where large cap is outperforming small and mid-cap, growth is outperforming value. And more specifically within large cap, we're seeing a high concentration within the index. So the last quarter, the big, I have lots of names and cute acronyms and things for, the markets are concentrated. We're now the magnificent seven. So we've gone from the fangs to the magnificent seven that are driving the vast majority of the returns of the index. So that's Nvidia, Meta, Amazon, Tesla, Apple, Microsoft and Alphabet. Those seven names returned 52% to 15% respectively within that range. So very, very concentrated. And we're seeing 10%, or sorry, the top 10 stocks within the S and P contributed 80% of that return. So it's a very narrow universe and that's going to tie in when we look at the large cap option. So pretty unique concentration in there. But overall, again, higher level positive returns, albeit two sectors generated positive returns, just that bigger concentration within that handful of names. On the next page, within international markets, generally positive here, a little bit less excitement and concentration. But positive returns primarily developed markets outperforming emerging markets. Some China's been struggling, which brings the emerging market average down. But generally speaking, positive returns, just less positive than in the U.S. And then on the next page with the fixed income, Paul gave us a nice summary of interest rates and the yield curve. So more specifically, the aggregate index, where the lion's share of the passive and active fixed income options. That's the primary benchmark of that ag. So negative return there. In terms of what drove performance within fixed income, the spread sector. So anything that's not a treasury that has a spread relative to treasuries did better. And if you think about that risk-on environment within the equity space, it translated to fixed income. So the higher risk, the higher the return. So higher yield names, lower quality performed better than the more defensive treasury. Questions on the cat markets? Well, then that brings us to, we'll skip the next page and go to page five. So we, we talk a lot about volatility, changing market environments. So then that leads us to how does that impact participants? What can we do about that? If we think about the fact this is a participant-directed plan, so there's not a whole lot we can do to change the allocations. What we can control is the overall menu, the options that we make available to participants so that they can navigate the uncertainty, the volatility over short-term and long-term periods. And so as refined, you all have what we call an active-passive mirror. So in each major asset class, participants can choose between a passive option and an active option. So whether they're younger, whether they're older, high-risk, low-risk, they have everything from capital preservation to U.S. small cap. So low-risk to high-risk, active-passive. And then Goalmaker, for those that say, you know what, just do it for me. I want you to make the allocations and adjust them over time. Goalmaker handles that. So we're giving them all the tools that they need for their own unique circumstances. So first and foremost, that's what, what we as fiduciaries can do for participants. And I mentioned that too. I know we've talked about the allocation between active and passive. We can't move that. It's a participant-directed plan, but they have the option and they can make that choice to go into the passive options as well. All right, performance-wise on page six, starting high level. Just quickly, the passive options are doing what they're designed to do. They are tracking the index with a low fee, slow tracking error, so effectively replicating their benchmarks. And then on the active options, just running through, starting longer term. I know again, we, we meet every quarter, but over the options that have been available seven and 10 years, all ahead of the benchmarks. All but one ahead over five years. And then a little bit mixed over the shorter-term periods, we see movement back and forth between the options. Stable value pretty consistently, top quartile of the years, and we're going to talk more, Weston will walk us through that. On the fixed income side, as of December, that was one of the options that was highlighted as underperforming. It's now back ahead. So the fixed income option at the level of participancy is ahead of the benchmark over all periods. Same for international with the exception of three years, has come back nicely, largely in part to be like Gifford. And we'll talk a little bit about Mondrian's recovery as well. So good solid outperformance from international. Large cap core has come back at the end of 22. That one was struggling a little bit, but we've seen good outperformance year-to-date. And for the last quarter, and then the small mid-cap option flipped a little bit, so a little bit behind, good absolute returns. But a little bit behind the benchmark year-to-date, better performance over the longer term. And behind the scenes, again, with kind of coming back to that point of endpoint sensitivity. So when you roll off a bad quarter and break on a good quarter, vice versa, these numbers can move pretty dramatically. So just want to give the board assurance that behind the scenes, we're talking to staff every quarter. Our teams are looking at this daily. So we're not just looking at those periods, we're looking at consistency. So quarter to quarter, year to year, how are the managers doing? What does the interaction look like? So there's a lot more, again, underneath the structure that they can move from quarter to quarter. But we're taking a longer-term view and looking at absolute return, relative return and inconsistency as well. Any questions high level before we highlight a few managers?
All right, we're going to jump forward to page 15. And it's the Callan manager assessment. And this is how we view, and what about, you know, the stoplight, maybe just a, yes, right there. So this is how we view not just the performance and kind of the triggers for performance and a watch list. But how are the people, the process, the philosophy, the product? How are those dynamics? And are there some things that are worth some, some discussion and consideration? I would just say high level, the performance for all the strategies are within a range of, of expectations that we would have for them. But where there is some challenge performance, we will point it out here. Just a couple of things I think Elizabeth alluded to. And there's going to be later on in the agenda, Chris will go over a manager that's being removed from the watch list. So effectively you'll have zero managers on the watch list. I would just say, don't get too used to that. There's always probably going to be one or two and it are, you know, a consideration. So we'll, we will tell you what is Callan paying attention to, what are we paying very close attention to with the managers and really who? So the first is this Macquarie large cap value. If you think of a basketballer or a football coach in college, you know, they, they typically have four years to turn around the situation. And, and, you know, they, because it's all their own kind of recruited players. Well, similar, the Ty Nutt retired in July 2019. It's been four years. So really all the stocks that have been selected, not all of them, but the majority of the stocks that have been selected have been selected by the, the newer team and Ty Nutt was one of the founders of the strategy. So one of the considerations is that the execution here has been a little bit soft. Now, in fairness to Macquarie, they, their last quarter, the first quarter of 2023 was one of the worst that they've had in a long, long time. So that endpoints sensitivity weighs in here. But just want to see some consistency and, and performance and, and, you know, within expectations. As you think about how they are interacting with the other managers in the program. They are fulfilling their role a little bit more core value, whereas Hotchkiss and Wile is a little bit more key value. But this is one of the things that we, we would expect to see is a little bit better execution from the portfolio management team that remains. And you also see the, one of the senior PMs, Bob Vogel, is retiring. So that's something that we're, we're paying attention to. So we're a little bit more cautionary and Macquarie. We're not saying you need to put them on watch or you need to take any sort of action. But just don't be surprised if in future quarters, we continue to talk, talk about this and maybe potentially on down the road, recommend further action. Skipping down to sans large cap growth, this is one of the ones that we've talked about primarily for performance. What are we paying attention to with sans? Well, a couple of things. Mike Schramick, who is one of the three co-PMS on the strategy, he, he has, has left the firm. And so that is a consideration. However, one of the things that I think when large cap manager goes, or any sort of manager goes through a challenging performance period like sans did in 2022, we want to see our clients and, you know, other, their clients terminating the sans strategy. And are they moving on or are they expecting the turnaround in sans and sticking with them? So we're paying close attention to flows. Flows have been stable at the firm. So there's not a mass exodus away from sans. I think a lot of folks that have terminated sans here more recently are the ones who came late, lately to the game. Those who have been sans with, with sans for a while, like yourselves, understand that they bring a very volatile performance pattern just based on their strategy and their style. So that is who continues to remain with them or those that have been with them and understand that they go through challenging performance periods, but they also reward you with very lucrative. In 2021, they were 30% ahead of the index. In 2022, they were 30% behind the index. So it's just, that is the nature of how they operate. But we are paying attention to those flows and also the personnel. And then finally, on the very bottom of page 17, we will also reiterate what Paul from Galliard said about TCW Core Plus. By the time we had printed this, it was shortly after they announced the retirements of Blair Landman and Steve Kane. By the time we had printed this, it was shortly after they announced the retirements of Laird Landman and Steve King. So we are, we actually had a meeting with them earlier this week, our global manager research team. And, you know, they sent us some notes. There is some concern, but it's a very moderated concern. I think the, the bigger picture here is that this was the old Met West team that TCW came in and bought. And they kept things intact for a while. And then, you know, a lot of the old Met, that was the strategy that you think you all originally hired in the team. So now that evolution has become more TCW like and less Met West like. So that is one of the things that we're, we're paying attention to. But overall, right now, no, no recommendation to put them on any sort of formal watch list. And then I will maybe segue into the next agenda item, but I'll take you to page 22. And this is, we, Elizabeth showed you all the performance net of fees versus what is a net of fee stable value peer group. But we, we think that looking at the gross of fee returns against a separate account peer group is, is maybe a better comparison. Because it takes into account larger institutional players like yourself to where you get more customized stable value management like you, you all have. So how do they compare? Just looking at historical returns, you see in the top third over the three and the five years. So they, they have done what you have hired them to do. But I would argue in stable value, it is not so much about reaching for that incremental rate of, rate of return. It is by offering a sound and solid capital preservation options, something that people can rely on not to, not to do something silly. And then I will just mention that this is an aspirational target below. You see the T bill plus one and a half. If you all know where I can get that kind of investment, please let me know. It's not an investable benchmark. It's, it's more of a, it's taking into account some of the features that stable value has, being able to go out in duration. And over time, we think that is a reasonable benchmark. But here in the near term, just given what T bills have done and how stable value is in the process of catching up. It is, it is not going to, you state, no stable value managers outperforming that. All right. So with that, I will jump to our next deck in the presentation, which is the stable value fund review. More stable value. Now you all hear from Galliard every quarter and I'll, I'll just jump to page four. So what can we possibly tell you that you don't already know about Galliard?
Can't just get caught up, is that a separate slide deck?
It is.
Okay, so we've got to switch.
So what, what can we tell you about Galliard that you don't already know? Well, we can offer some perspective on the opinions around some of their personnel. Stability of the personnel, what they're doing, the process. And we can also give you a broader perspective of what peers are doing. So what are, what do other stable value funds look like? So Galliard does a great job of coming in and reporting on what they do. But this, this takes into account what they do as well as others. So if we were to summarize a couple of the key things, we spent a lot of time and a lot of heat talking about the changes that occurred in 2019, where a lot of the founders of the firm ultimately ended up retiring. That transition seems to be fully, you know, gone through. The next generation of the firm has taken over and has offered some stability there. Another thing that we have been paying attention to is the ownership changes that have occurred over time. Effectively Wells Fargo Asset Management spinning off Allspring Global Investments and that becoming bought by two private equity firms. I will say, performance has largely been in line for Galliard over time and certainly within, in line with expectations. And a lot of that is driven by the people and the, the quality of the people, the experience of the people that Galliard employs. So really strong from that angle. So just to maybe jump forward, we'll, we'll put some numbers behind this. But on page eight, we'll talk about the group of stable value managers versus. So what is Galliard doing versus what are stable value peers doing? So on this chart on the top right, we look at effective duration. So if stable value gets a unique accounting treatment by being able to mark that book value. So they are able to reach out a little bit in terms of risk in order to achieve an incremental return that should over time outperform a traditional money market fund. And, you know, for, you know, as a safe capital preservation oriented option. So there are largely two ways that they can get the risk. They can add credit risk or they can add duration risk. So the first one looks at duration risk versus peers. Galliard certainly, if you look at this gray band, that is the 10th and 90th percentile of peers. So and then there's a little white line in the middle, that is the median. So if you were to look at Galliard and say, well, they're maybe a little bit higher up in duration. This is part of what you get with Galliard. And really certainly within a range of expectations or a range of, of the range of peers, but just slightly higher on duration. And that has, has occurred over time. If you were to roll down and look at the quality exposure here, we don't show this versus peers. But we just say consistently, Galliard has offered a high quality portfolio underlying kind of the, the bond management underlying the stable value fund is, is a high quality. Going to page nine, we'll talk about crediting rate and market book and think of some of these as the health of the overall fund. So as, from a crediting rate perspective, you want to see this is what the participants ultimately receive in kind of that, you know, return or the cash on cash that they get. So it, the Galliard is right at the median. In fact, they're covering it up the, the white line here and has been pretty consistently over median throughout time. But over the past, call it four quarters, they've been more in line with that, that median result. And then the market to book, you see for all peers, it has effectively gone down because a lot of other stable value managers are doing what Galliard is doing. Is, you know, going out a little bit in duration. And so by doing so, the market to books have, have dropped down to around the 92 and a half percent range. But Galliard, close to the median on that result.
Weston, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So on the crediting rate, the universe, it looks like there's at least one that that's pretty high in terms of maybe has a close to three and a half percent crediting rate, which is quite a ways away from the median. But would you say they're doing that most other plans are? I mean, is it just they're reaching for more risk or?
Yeah, and some of these are maybe a little bit more unique insurance products that have historically reached for more risk. But I mean, if they're taking on more duration risk, you expect that crediting rate to actually be lower. So it may be that.
Just very, a lot shorter duration in general?
shorter duration is potentially. So they'll get the bump now, but they won't maintain that bump.
They wouldn't outperform over the long term. Thank you.
Right. And then I think since fees are in the discussion this quarter, we'll just look at page 13. How do these fees compare? So you have the Galliard management fee by basis points compares favorably to the peer group. You'd want to see the 100th percentile here or you want to see kind of a number higher than the median as a good result. Galliard has been very aggressive, we think one of the industry leaders in negotiating contracts with insurers. So those wrap fees that you see are also below median. But I'll note that the peer group, there is a very tight dispersion. So while they're, you know, in the 87th percentile, that is, you know, just a mere basis point or not, not even from being in 100th percentile. So, and then the sub advisor fees, not all, some stable value funds will manage the entirety of the portfolio themselves. And some will almost outsource the entirety of the bond management to, to, to be managed by external advisors. But Galliard has a blend of that, you heard 50 50. But, you know, in terms of the sub advisor fees that they negotiate on your behalf, they, they remain pretty low. And then just one or two more slides on page 16, just to dovetail on what, what Paul said about the comparison over time. This is similar, just looking at rolling, kind of rolling one year returns on the left. The blue line being a taxable money market account. And then the, the golden rod line being a, what you all have, which is a stable value separate account. You see yield advantage really over, or return advantage really coming over a long period of time. And here more recently, just given the dynamics of quickly rising interest rates, money market has jumped in slightly ahead of, of stable value. We, we like Galliard, believe this is a more temporary phenomenon and not something worth redesigning the whole plan in order to, to make sure that there's a money market strategy in the account. It, it is a discussion that can be had over time, but you know, dovetailing on Empower's comments is we don't see a lot of that where plans offer both a money market fund and a stable value fund. And then page 17 shows, if you think of this Bloomberg government credit, one to three year effective yield. You see the volatility of that yield over time. That's the, the greenish line. How does, you know, what, what does stable value do for you? Well, it dampens this volatility in the yield. So the gray line ultimately converges. The expectation is that it will converge upon what that green line is doing. It just takes some time to catch up. So that is effectively what is going on. And, and you know, the crediting rates should move higher to effectively catch up with, with the yield on all over one to three years. That is the short and sweet version of stable value. I think you all have had enough stable value punishment for the day, so I'll stop there.
I get a question goes back to what you were talking about earlier. So I, I didn't quite understand the corporate structure, right? Before where Wells Fargo became Allspring purchased you guys. And then you mentioned that there's private, two private equity firms that are now owners. Was that, were the private equity owners to two people that you were talking about? The woman and the guy Sullivan?
Yeah, so no, that's the Allspring.
That's Allspring.
That's the parent. So if you kind of think of it, Allspring is the previous Wells Fargo asset management. Galliard was part of Wells Fargo asset management, but autonomous, like separate from them. So when Allspring was created, Galliard moved over there, but we're still in an autonomous unit. So in terms of the structure as well, so it's Reverence Capital and GTCR, those are two, two private equity firms.
And what's their strategy?
Theirs in terms of.
What do they do with the firms that they require?
With, with them, there is no exit strategy at this point. Cause as you may know, private equity firms stay in, you know, they hold their, their companies seven, 10 years and they look for now. But right now, there is no discussion on that. They've been very hands off. They provided ample assets for us to, to grow our business. That's what they'd like us to do and Alls, and Allspring as well. And really just to give you an idea about the, the ownership structure. So the, the high level investment teams and the senior managers of Allspring and Galliard were given an opportunity to buy into the, the sale. So they have equity, so they have about 20% equity. So they have skin in the game, let's say. So private equity firms have the, the remaining, you know, about 72%. And Wells Fargo still has about 8% specifically for distribution channels. But Wells Fargo is, they're not a voting member. They have nothing really to do with it. They're just a passive investor.
Thanks.
Great. Any other questions for Callan?
I've got one. This is Steve Beam again. Weston, is there, if you were doing a search today, is there any reason you would not include Galliard?
So, no. Some of it would depend on what the client wants. And I, I don't want to give you a cagey answer and I'm trying to think here. We actually just had a discussion about Galliard the other day for a, a client of ours that is merging, is a corporate client. They're merging two very large corporate plans. And then they're trying to determine who, you know, do I take the best of approach? Do we just merge the slightly smaller plan into the larger plan? And so Galliard is one of the managers there eating versus another. And Galliard won effectively won because they, we think that they're the stronger player. So to answer your question, that, you know, it's, it's hard to say if we were doing a search today, they were certainly one of the tier one players. But some of the selection of a stable value manager comes back to, well, do I want the structure that say a Galliard provides where they manage 50, 60, 70% of the portfolio? Or do I want a structure like say Infesco provides where Infesco manages only a small piece of the underlying bond management? But they have more sub advisors around. Or there's the T row approach to where T row is managing the entirety of the bond portfolio. So some of it comes down to that. We, we think Galliard offers a good middle of the road approach. They have good thorough screening on those underlying sub advisors. And, and we think that they've been one of the leading players in the industry for a long, long time. And they've done a great job. Sure.
So yes, Galliard would come to search committee and then the decision of who advances from search committee would be the client specific. But yes, they are still a candidate that is coming forward to Callan search committee.
There's the more direct.
Thank you.
For consultants, we can't help it. Sometimes we just have to say the best.
Any further questions? All right, thanks Weston Elizabeth.
You can stay there in case something comes up.
All right, next up, another Chris, Chris Flores.
Thanks, Tom. I have a few agenda items here. I'll, I'll try to be brief. First item is the, the second quarter investment compliance summer report. The report, as you see every quarter is. We continue to monitor daily our prohibited holdings as well as monitor the investment guidelines for, for all of our investment mandates. And nothing material to report for, for Q2 that we're under the exceptions. And I guess that it's something where we're constantly monitoring every day. So we'll keep you up to date if, if anything material arises. With that, I'll, I'll move on to the, the next agenda item, which is the small mid cap core fund manager transition update. So as a reminder, at the, the May board meeting, the board voted to terminate the wedge small mid cap value mandate and transition those assets to the Russell 2500 Smith value index fund. Until such time as a search could for a potential replacement or wedge could be completed. So since the board meeting, we have been successful in, in executing the board's instruction. We negotiated a contract with BlackRock to manage the Russell 2500 value index fund in a separately managed account. We, we took a look at, to see if there were any CTAs available. Sometimes that's easier, sometimes that's a little bit less costly. But there really wasn't any CTAs for CITs for, for that specific mandate, given it was a pretty specific value index. So we were able to work with BlackRock to, to have them agree to manage that in a separately managed account. So after that, we terminated the wedge mandate and we tried to transition those assets to a new account utilizing the BlackRock transitions team to execute the trade. In terms of the transition itself, 96% of it was completed within three days and 99% of it was completed within five days. There were a couple of illiquid names that, that wedge had in the portfolio, which took a bit longer to sell. But that didn't hold up really transferring the, the assets to the new account. So the total commissions came in at just under $150,000 for, for the transition, which is just over four basis points or 0.04% of the value of, of the, the wedge mandate, which came in, in line with expectations. So as a reminder, it was about a $300 million mandate. So transition went as expected, no issues there. Assets moved over, as I said, and BlackRock's managing the, the new portfolio until such time as a decision from the board as to what to do with those assets. So. So with regards to the Smith Cap Value Search, we continue to make good progress on that and we, we hope to have that discussion at the next board meeting at the end of November. So hopefully we'll, we'll be able to make a more permanent decision at that point in time. Happy to answer any questions on that. Okay, there are no questions. I'll move on to the last agenda item. The recommendation to remove Mondrian from, from the watch list. There's a memo in your materials addressing this topic. Just as a reminder, Mondrian, they manage, they're in the, the international equity mandate. Sorry, the international equity white label fund. And they manage just under a billion dollars for us. I think it was 966 million at the end of June. They were added to the watch list in 2018 as a result of ongoing performance below the broad non-US index. So they've been on the watch list for quite a while. You know, we've closely monitored them and continue to have conviction in their value driven investment philosophy, their investment process, the personnel, their assets under management, they have all remained stable over this time period. We've seen the strategy's performance rebound significantly. And as of June 30 of this year, the strategy is outperforming its benchmark for the one, three and five year time periods. So given all this, given the rebounded performance, their consistency in process, personnel and AUM, along with our continued conviction in them, you know, we recommend removing them from, from the watch list. Certainly happy to dive into anything else in the recommendation or answer any questions. Anyone has on that?
No questions.
All right. So I guess what we needed now is a motion. Do we have a motion to remove Mondrian from the watch list?
So moved.
Removed.
All right, we have a motion. We do a second for you, Steve?
That's fine.
All right. Motion a second? We'll now take the roll. Thomas Calzey? Yes? Chappelle Thomas?
Aye.
James Lumston?
Aye.
Greg Patterson?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
And Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, do we have, was there any public comment? No public comment. And let's go to the board of trustees. Any comments before we adjourn from board members?
Wanted to recognize Lorraine's mother who recently passed, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, the treasurer asked that we adjourn in her honor. That just a second. Anybody attending virtually or by phone? Any board members have any comments?
I just want to say, I was listening to everything. I tested positive for COVID yesterday, so I'm not feeling the best. So.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Listen, I'm taking medication, so I'm good. I just want to let you all know that.
Sorry to hear that. Thanks for hanging in with us. Well, our next board meeting is Thursday, November 30th at nine. And like Nels pointed out, you know, we'd like to end the meeting in honor of Lorraine Johnson's mother, Emily Johnson. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Aye, we have a motion and a second. Call roll. Thomas Calzey?
Aye.
Chappelle Thomas?
Aye.
James Lumston?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Steve Beam?
Aye.
And Wynden Hibbler?
And for the last time, aye.
Oh, man, too bad.
Y'all have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.